If you please rise to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is one nation, united in its manifold blessings.
Soon as we get a hold of Putin.
Yes, we gotta see if we can.
See if we can get Ray on.
Yeah, keep going.
Show off, show off. Let me do something. I'll go text him.
No, he told me to call him.
Trust me.
Yeah.
Text him. Trust me.
Okay, no, we're not, he's not there, so we'll try him after. He'll text me when he's ready.
Okay. All right, uh, call a meeting, Juana. Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Gigi? Mr. O'Hare?
Yeah.
Mr. Espinola?
Yeah.
Mr. Booton?
Anybody signed up for public appearance, would you know?
I've already checked, Mr. Chairman, there's no one signed up.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lemay. School Community Communications? Nope. Reporter student rep.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
On April 29th, Skills USA participants competed in the state competition. It was held in Marlborough, Mass. We had students win both medals and ribbons for their participation and are sending five students who have qualified to compete in the National Leadership and Skills Conference in Kentucky during the month of June. The, the kids who will be going to Kentucky are State Officer-elect Daniel Cornelia and others. And the people that won during states are Computer Programming Bronze, Palms Shanta-Volsak; Advertising and Design Gold, Caroline Foster; Silver, Maya Gerard; Early Childhood Bronze, Leah Zagofalus; Chapter Display Silver, Team Christopher Koffazok; Dominic Pickham, Louis Forcellis; and Engineering Technology Bronze, Team of Daniel Meguch, Eddie Tran, and Charles Mederos. Aesthetics Gold, Rachel Rinaldi with Model Tyanna Diaz; Nail Care Bronze, Martha Yuga and with Model Paula Fontas; Painting and Design Bronze, Mercedes Liku; and Career Choice Company, Freshman Events Evan Bladus. National Leadership Participants are Daniel Cornelia, Caroline Foster, Maya Gerard, Rachel Rinaldi, and Tyanna Diaz. The Greater Lowell Tech Talent Show will be held on Wednesday, May 18th, in the lecture hall from 2:15 to 4:30 PM. Students from the Community Service Club and the Sophomore Class Committee participated in the Merrick-Mack Valley Food Bank's annual spring pantry raid. They assisted with dropping off donation bags in the neighborhoods surrounding the school. Donations collected during the pantry raid allow the pantry to provide low-income families with healthy food options. Members of the National Technical Honor Society and the Junior Class will be participating in the Lowell General Hospital Team Walk for Cancer Care on Sunday, May 22nd. Funds raised enable Lowell General Hospital to provide assistance, support, and services to help cancer patients feel better, build confidence, and instill hope throughout their battle with cancer. The Senior Class is getting excited for their senior week activities. June 6th is the field trip to Chunky Cinema. June 7th is the field trip to Six Flags. June 8th is the Hidden Test and Field Day. June 9th is graduation rehearsal, and June 10th is graduation. For athletics, boys volleyball has enjoyed a successful season. They qualified for the MIAA tourney play with a season record of 10 to 3. Both boys and girls of class have recently enjoyed success. The girls picked up wins over Nishoba Tech and Marion, while boys swept home and home series with Minutemen. The tennis team currently sits at 4 to 0 as of May 10, May 10, 2016. The team will also be hosting CAC League match on May 25th. Both the basketball and softball teams, sorry, baseball and softball teams, have battled the weather and difficult field conditions this spring. Both teams have a number of games to play, and as we head down the home stretch of the season, both are in the mix for MIAA tourney qualifications. Baseball will be playing in the annual Sullivan Classic at LeChur, Shawshing, and Essex Tech on May 16th and May 17th. Boys and girls track have enjoyed strong seasons, and the Griffins recently host a CAC freshman and sophomore meet on May 7th, and will be competing in the MVADA state vocational meet on May 19th, as well as the CAC League meet on May 21st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bahu?
Thank you so much. You know, that's a lot, you've been here every meeting for the past school year, and you're graduating this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, we just want to thank you for, you know, showing up every Thursday night, I know it's not, I'm sorry, every Thursday night, uh, third Thursday of the month. And, you know, you've done a great job giving us the reports and stuff, and, you know, we're very grateful that you were able to, you know, give us that, so, there you are.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Approval of the minutes?
Thanks a lot. Coming back.
Yeah, motion?
Second.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Gigi? Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Report of the treasurer? That's me. Okay. Motion to approve the expenditures for the sum of $3,678,929.55.
Motion to move the, uh, to waive the reading?
Roll call.
No, I need a second.
Okay.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Gigi? Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Gigi? Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Uh, report of general counsel, no report tonight, right?
Nope, no report.
Okay. Uh, next we'll have a report of the superintendent-director.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We're really fortunate tonight to have some really special people here that we're gonna recognize and get a chance to talk a little bit about. The first of which is a gentleman who was with the class of 2015. He, um...
Smiling.
Graduated with the class of 2015, however, due to the state regulations regarding the MCAS test and the computer determination, we weren't able to give him his diploma at that time. But to his credit, he put in the time, the effort, he stuck with it, he persevered, he passed that test, and we're very, very happy and proud to be able to present him with his diploma tonight. So, Christian Hernandez. You gotta get a picture. Metal fabrication you graduated from?
Yep.
Great.
That's fantastic. Good for you.
Can I say a few things?
Absolutely.
Love you too.
Just bear with me, this is my first time speaking in front of an audience, but, um, I would like to thank, first of all, my family for, you know, helping me achieve this diploma. I want to say thank you to the staff as well. This is, you know, a big part of me. Um, you know, as you know, I graduated in 2015, and I was really frustrated, but, you know, in the end, it, it really mattered to me because, you know, I worked really hard for this, and I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm happy, you know? Uh, no words can really describe the excitement I'm feeling tonight. But, um, you know, as future, you know, uh, because I'm sure that there's gonna be a lot of students that are gonna be in the same shoes, I, you know, I just want to say, you know, do it, you know, you can do it, you know, I did it, um, it's, it's not hard, just put in the effort, you know, just show, show that you care, because, you know, deep inside, you might, you know, feel the same way that I did, you know, I can't do it, it's too hard, but, you know, with the teachers and the staff there, you know, you can do it, you know?
That's great.
And tonight, we, we also have family of one of our longtime coaches and employees here, Joe Kane's family's here. At the last meeting, this group voted to provide the naming rights to the new gym floor in Joe's honor. So, we're very fortunate tonight to have his family here. I had the great privilege and honor of knowing Joe, even though I was, I was coaching for a different school. He was coaching for Greater Lowell Tech, that school I was coaching for will remain nameless. But, but we had some really great, great times together, great games, he was, you know, just, just an unbelievable gentleman. He truly understood, and, you know, as an opposing coach, as a coach from the other sideline, you can, you can really tell, the coaches that are in it to win games, and the coaches that really care very deeply about the kids, and they look at coaching as a teachable moment to get kids prepared for success, and Joe certainly epitomized that. I want to thank Eric Burgess from our staff, he's the gentleman who nominated Joe for this honor. He wrote up a, a beautiful tribute to him in his nomination. I have copies that I want to share with the family in a few minutes, but I would like to just take a minute just to read just a couple of paragraphs from that, because it really captures Joe. And I quote Eric, "Joe was truly, was a truly unique man, a combination of drive, insight, compassion, toughness, wit, humor, and strong convictions. He brought his amazing persona to all the endeavors of his life, and to those he affected as an educator, coach, in so many ways as a friend. He was generous in spirit and helped many in need, in hundreds of both obvious and understated ways. Most especially, we will remember how much he made students and staff feel like they had something special to offer as individuals in classrooms, playing fields, and in life. So many of us benefited greatly from his befriending qualities. He wasn't into programming a person, but rather he strove to encourage and guide others when necessary to help them find the special strengths and abilities within themselves. He helped so many cultivate these strengths, and his loyalty and interest to those who came to know him stayed forever." I think that captures Joe pretty well. So I'd just like to invite the family up, thank, and congratulate you, and share this tribute with you.
Many, many spaghetti dinners at home when I played football.
Look at this.
I just picked it up so no one would take it. Cool, it's right there. I was the guy just giving it back to them.
Thank you, everyone, for such a great honor. I'm sure he's looking down and smiling.
Absolutely.
He was a great teacher, he pushed the students, whether they were in the PE classes, out in the field, he did girls' basketball, he loved that, he did the football, and he just was a great guy. Thank you.
Those who didn't know that his son's a coach here also.
My son is a coach. My daughter is also a coach back there, in both boroughs. So, and again, they're both teachers, and love what we do. I was a teacher, loved what we, what we do, and he did too, and he loved this school, and he, he taught a lot of the staff and the students, he really loved this place, yeah.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce our assistant principal, Jill Davis, who's going to introduce the top 10 students in our class of 2016.
Boy, so maybe I'll just stand this way, so you don't have to look at my back as I speak about the students. They're not gonna hear me? Okay, so I guess I'm gonna...
Sit on the side.
How about if you sit this way?
You can sit on the side.
Sit this way? Sure.
So, thank you for coming this evening, I have the privilege of introducing and recognizing these students for this great achievement of being the top 10 in the class of 2016. But before I begin to talk about them, I just want to thank you all, as parents, family members, friends, teachers here this evening, because these students could not have achieved what they have achieved without the support of all of you. So thank you for your support. And with that, our top 10 students. Maya Gerard. Maya Gerard is the daughter of Keith and Amy Gerard of Tingsborough. Maya is ranked number 10 in the class of 2016 with a GPA of 102.5. Maya's technical program is Design and Visual Communications. This year, Maya was enrolled in the Dual Enrollment Program for English Composition through Middlesex Community College. She's a member of Skills USA and a National Technical Honor Society member. Maya has also been a member of the Yearbook Club and the Girls Varsity Soccer Team. She has volunteered at the Bay State Marathon in the Tingsborough Public Library. Maya is currently employed at AMC Tingsborough. She is the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Maya plans to attend Endicott College and major in digital film production in order to pursue a career in the film industry. The number 10 ranking student in the class of 2016, Maya Gerard. Steven Byrd is not here this evening, but I will recognize him for his achievements. Steven Byrd is the son of Freedom, a cloud of Lowell. Steven is ranked number nine in the class of 2016 with a GPA of 103.0. Steven's technical program is electronics. He currently participates in the Cooperative Education Program and is employed by IBM, where he works in network security, keeping systems up to date and monitoring for any defects that may occur. Steven has participated as a member of the Greater Lowell Track Team, where he competed in the long jump and the 100-meter dash. Steven is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship and the American International College Scholarship. Steven plans to attend American International College, where he will study in chemistry and pursue a career as a physician. The number nine ranking student in the class of 2016, Steven Byrd. Kayleen LaRose. Kayleen LaRose is the daughter of Roger and Diane LaRose of Tingsborough. Kayleen is ranked number eight in the class of 2016 with a GPA of 103.9. Kayleen's technical program is cosmetology. She currently participates in the Cooperative Education Program and is employed by Absolute Elegant Salon. Kayleen is a recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. She has also received several awards over the years, the Top 10 plaque, grades nine through 12, and high honor roll, grades nine through 12. Kayleen volunteers in her community at the Lowell Humane Society and the Dunstable Land Trust. Kayleen plans to attend Plymouth State College to pursue a degree in environmental science and one day work in the field to identify causes of, causes of change to our climate. The number eight ranking student in the class of 2016, Kayleen LaRose. Gabriel Reyes. Gabriel Reyes is the son of Odia Reyes and Teresa Proventure of Lowell. Gabriel is ranked number seven in the class of 2016 with a GPA of 104.2. Gabriel's technical program is early childhood education. Gabriel has been a member of and participate in the following clubs and activities, Drama Club, Assistant to the Parent Organization, and Lucy's Love Bus. Gabriel plans to attend Revere University and major in secondary education. He would also like to combine his studies with art. The number seven ranking student in the class of 2016, Gabriel Reyes. Sopeven Sin. Sopeven Sin is the daughter of Yim Sin of Lowell. Sopeven is ranked number six in the class of 2016 with a GPA of 104.6. Sopeven's technical program is engineering. Sopeven has participated in and is a member of the following clubs and activities, Anime Club, Environmental Club, Skills USA Student Ambassador, Vex Robotic Competition, and Math Meet at Blue Hills Regional High School. Sopeven plans to attend Middlesex Community College before transferring to the University of Massachusetts Lowell to major in computer science. The number six ranking student in the class of 2016, Sopeven Sin. Stephanie Silva. Stephanie Silva is the daughter of Louis and Maria Silva of Lowell. Stephanie is ranked number five in the class of 2016 with a grade point average of 105.2. Stephanie's technical program is medical assisting. Stephanie has participated in and is a member of the following organizations and activities, National Technical Honor Society, Skills USA, the Dual Enrollment Program for English Composition through Middlesex Community College. Stephanie has received the following awards and scholarship. Skills USA Silver Medal at Districts Medical Math 2016. Skills USA Gold Medal, First Place at Districts Medical Math 2015. Honor Roll All Four Years, Algebra Outstanding Student, Student of the Month, Holy Ghost Society Scholarship, and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. She has been employed for the last five years at Walkers Gymnastics and Dance. Stephanie plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell and pursue a career as a registered nurse. The number five ranking student in the class of 2016, Stephanie Silva. Colleen McDonough. Colleen is the daughter of Edmund and Amanda McDonough of Lowell. Colleen is ranked number four in the class of 2016 with a GPA of 105.3. Colleen's technical program is Design and Visual Communications. This year, Colleen was enrolled in the Dual Enrollment Program for English Composition through Middlesex Community College. She has also been a member of Skills USA, the Yearbook Committee, and captain of the girls' tennis team. Colleen is recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Colleen is currently employed by Forever 21. She plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell in the fall to pursue a career in studio arts and to become a sequential artist and an art teacher. The number four ranking student in the class of 2016, Colleen McDonough. Allison Welch. Allison Welch is the daughter of Norm and Bonnie Welch of Tingsborough. Allison is ranked number three in the class of 2016 with a grade point average of 105.7. Allison's technical program is cosmetology. She has received the following awards and scholarships, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship in grades 10 and 11, Outstanding Achievement in Cosmetology, Top 10 plaque, grades nine through 12, and High Honor Roll as well, grades nine through 12. Allison volunteers at the Nashua Soup Kitchen. Allison plans to attend Middlesex Community College as a business major while working full-time at Fancy Nancy's Elite Hair Designers and open her own salon in the future. The number three ranking student in the class of 2016, Allison Welch. I just want to inform everybody that our number two and number one student are not here this evening because they are proudly representing Greater Lowell Technical High School at the state vocational track, track meet. So I just want to, I'm going to acknowledge them, and I just want to say that we appreciate their commitment to their team, and hopefully they are, they, they are winning at the state track meet tonight. So, with that, Steven Gardette is the son of Paul and Helen Gardette of Drakett. Steven is a class of 2016 salutatorian with a grade point average of 107.1. Steven's technical program is electronics. Steven has distinguished himself by participating in the Cooperative Education Program, which offers students paid internships in their career field. He is currently employed by IBM as a recycling technician. Steven has been commended by his supervisor as an asset to the team. He has been described as a team leader who is highly motivated and has shown success at delegating tasks to fellow interns. Steven is a member of the track team, where he was named MVP in 2015. Steven has received numerous awards for excelling in academics. He is also the recipient of the following scholarships, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Hellenic American Academy Alumni Association Scholarship, MNOLIS Foundation Scholarship, and UMass Lowell's Dean's Scholarship. Steven plans to attend University of Massachusetts Lowell to pursue a degree in engineering. The number two ranking student in the class of 2016, Steven Gardette, and I hope he's winning some. Kaitlin Dion. Kaitlin Dion is the daughter of Philip Dion and Emily Maddox of Drakett. Kaitlin is the class of 2016 valedictorian with a grade point average of 107.2. Kaitlin's technical program is marketing education. She is a member of DECA and has competed this March in the state competition, where she received a first-place achievement award and fourth-place trophy in professional selling. These accomplishments awarded her the privilege of attending the International DECA Career Development Conference in Nashville, Tennessee, where she competed in the national competition. Kaitlin is also a member of the National Technical Honor Society, the National Student Leadership Conference, and the National Society of High School Scholars. She is also a member of the cross-country and track teams. Kaitlin has received numerous awards for excelling in academics, and she is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Kaitlin plans to attend the University of New Haven to pursue a degree in psychology. The number one ranking student in the class of 2016, Kaitlin Dion. I'd just like to say congratulations to all of you, and I'm very proud of your achievements, and you should all be proud of what you have achieved. Thank you.
Thank you, parents and families.
That Kane dedication, Roger, is that coming up?
We're going to, yeah, we're going to plan something for next school year. We're going to work and see when's the best, with the schedules and everything for the family and the best time to actually do it on the court. Yeah. Yeah, that'll be the next step, just like the dedication we're doing for David. We're going to plan that one next.
Are we continuing, Mr. Chairman, or are we?
Yes, we are. Take a breath.
Let's go. Right into it. Still on superintendent's business, right?
Yep.
Camera, guys.
Fourth, the fourth item on my report is the Cooperative Education Report. Included in your package is the numbers. Very quickly, we are seeing a 4% increase in the number of seniors who are on co-op, the same point in time last year, and a 6% increase in the number of juniors, which is almost double what we had last year. So our co-op coordinator and her staff are doing a great job and, you know, we're seeing some gains in the numbers and gains in the opportunities for kids to have success in work-based environments. The next item on my report would be requesting your approval of the 2016-17 school calendar, a draft of which was included in your packet, so.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Mr. Gigi?
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Next item on my, my report is annually, the Department of Education requires us to vote on whether or not we want to accept school choice students. In the past, we have voted to participate in the school choice program under the condition that either the waitlist has been exhausted and there's no kids waiting on the waitlist, then they would fill in the empty seats from school choice. Or if a student was already enrolled here but they moved out of district, we would use school choice to allow them the option to finish here if they'd like. It was under those two conditions in the past that we approved school choice, so.
Question to approve.
Okay, I'll second that. Under those conditions, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question. What is the, the number of school choice students that we had this school year? And is it a jump over what we've had in the past?
It's, so we, we've, at least since I've been here, we've never exhausted the waitlist. So therefore, we didn't take any kids that wanted to come here that weren't already here. We only allowed students to continue. So my understanding on our last October first numbers, there were, there were two school choice kids, which is really a nice thing to do if a student's here for two or three years and then their family moves out of the district to allow them to finish with their, their friends and classmates. So currently, we have two kids that are in that, that category enrolled here. So it's a very, very small number.
But they, but that's, unless there's a drop in enrollment, that's the only way a school choice student would.
Right. Unless we were, we were to exhaust our waitlist and everybody who applied got in and then we still had vacant seats that we could fill with kids that wanted to come from, from other districts. That's the only, and that's never happened as far as I know. It's just been to be able, you know, a vehicle to be able to extend to a student who, for whatever reasons, might move outside the district, but yet they're already here, they have the option of, of continuing and graduating from here under this provision.
Are those guidelines that we currently have, Roger?
Those are the restrictions or those are the guidelines that you include in your vote every year that, that.
So we adopt that as a committee at a halt?
Yep. You don't have to do school choice. If we didn't adopt school choice, a student moves out of the district, they have to leave. They don't have any option to stay and finish their, their education here. And the waitlist has never been exhausted, so we've never needed to, to go to school choice under that provision, so.
Well, all these, all these students are from Massachusetts.
Yes, yes. They would have to, yeah, if they moved out of state, they would be able to, to, to come because school choice is only for Massachusetts residents, yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Mr. Gigi?
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
And as you may recall in Victoria's report, she talked about our five students at states who have earned the right to go and compete nationally by winning gold medals. So we have five students and two staff members who will accompany them to the National Skills USA Competition in Louisville, Kentucky, June 20th to the 25th. And because that's travel, it's outside of New England, I'm asking for your approval for them to go.
So move, yes.
First, second.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Mr. Gigi?
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
And I've got two additional things that aren't on my report. I just want to remind everybody that on Saturday is the Dave McLaughlin dedication. Be down in our, well, in the new edition, so it'll be in the cafeteria. So from 12 to, yeah, from 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock is a luncheon reception followed by the dedication ceremony at 1 o'clock. And then the last thing that's not on my, on my report but that I wanted to share, I remember last meeting, I showed you a draft of a video that we're going to use as a pilot to put for each of the vocational shops and we got some really good feedback from folks. If you remember, that video did not have an intro yet, it hadn't been developed. So now it has an intro and it's been doctored up a little bit based on some of the feedback that you guys gave us. So I'd like to just show you the new version of it at this time, just to keep you in the Oh, the sound's not working.
Is this up yet, Roger?
Um, I don't think we put it up yet. I think they just kind of finished polishing it up today to show it to you guys, but it's gonna, Chad, is it up yet?
No.
But we can, we can get it up in the next couple of days, right? Now that this one.
Yeah, we just wanted to show it to you guys.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure, I think, that you felt that it was ready to go up. I know last time it was still pretty drafty, but, but this is really a, you know, kind of the finished product, so.
Now, is that gonna be a little bio of each shop?
Yeah, ultimately, over the next four years, we're gonna, we're gonna try and do six of them a year.
I don't think Paul was here when you explained this.
Okay. Yeah, so we're gonna try and develop six a year so that over a four-year period, all the shops will, will have it. So when you go on our website and you click on Auto Tech, you'll have pictures up in the right-hand corner, you'll have a written description of it, but then you'll also have a link that you can click and watch a short video with the goal being, you know, this year, we wanted to develop the pilot so that we knew the format that we were going to try and follow with the others so that they look similar. We have that. Now we'll post that and we'll start working on, on the, the others.
Okay. So, so that was the pilot? Because I wasn't here last meeting either.
Yeah.
That was the pilot? That's the first one that we?
So last meeting, it didn't have the introduction with the, with the new cafeteria and everything? So it was missing the introduction and I don't think it had, the other suggestion people made, you know, obviously, we needed an introduction, it just wasn't done yet. So we'll use the same introduction on all of them so that they'll all look consistent, that the beginning and ending will look the same, and then obviously, the content will be different. The other thing the committee recommended was the branding. So at the bottom, there was a Greater Lowell Technical High School with an, with the emblem all the way through it so that that was always present. So it was a introduction, kind of a real short ending, and then a little brand while it's playing, so.
So the committee was making a recommenda, making recommendations at the last meeting?
After they viewed it, they had some recommendations, you know, mostly to, to brand it stronger so that you knew you were watching something from Greater Lowell Tech. That was the primary recommendation that we tried to incorporate in the new version, which I think is, is in pretty good shape.
Sure, very good.
It looks really nice.
Outstanding. If I could just make one recommendation, seeing as the school committee was making recommendations and I missed the last meeting, maybe if we could just change the music on each one so that they don't, that doesn't have that same sound over and over again.
So we have a different, yeah, different music from, from, yeah, same format introduction, but different music.
Different background.
So if you're watching three or four, you're not hearing the same.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's a great, great idea.
Just, just to change it up, it might get dull if that's the case.
And I'll bring, you know, as they develop others, I'll, I'll bring them to the meeting so that you guys can check them out as they're, as they're in production.
Thank you.
So you got their recommendation, Mr. Fallon?
All set.
All right. We'll get this up and running the next week, week, next few days?
Yeah.
Yeah, tomorrow. All right, great.
Oh, even better.
Great, great. All right, that's, that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Report of business manager.
So we have three things to report. One is the fuel adjustment with NRT. We had another fuel adjustment. We got a credit of 20,000, $20,007.45. The budget update, as you know, we have to get four votes from the four different communities. We went to Dunstable on May 9th and they voted to approve our budget as presented, but that vote was contingent on voters passing an override on May 16th, which did not happen. So I believe what, what happens in this case, I think they'll do another town meeting and we'll have to attend another town meeting.
Yeah, so, so Dunstable approved the budget for their operating expenses, which included us, Groton, Dunstable, LaFaire, everybody, but it was contingent on an override passing. The override did not pass on the 16th, which meant that the budget's not approved and they're going to have to develop a new budget and have another town meeting. It won't affect us because our numbers are, are minimum numbers, so we'll be in there, but we'll, we'll just go to another town meeting and, you know, we'll, we'll have to find out when that is.
Right.
And then Tinsborough had theirs this past, the 17th, so Tuesday night, we were at, we're at Tinsborough. Tinsborough passed, yeah, they voted their budget, that's all set. So we got one vote out of the four. We had two, but one of them got nullified when the override didn't go through.
Right. So we'll attend the Drakett Town Meeting on June 6th and we still haven't heard about Lowell, the date?
They usually invite us to go sometime in June. They let us know when they're ready for us to go and their budget process unfolds. So it's not, that's typical that we would get notified of a date, usually the, the first, second, third week in June, in June.
Right. And other than that, I just wanted to, I mean, let you know that we have been spending the transfers that we requested at the previous meeting, making sure that everyone's spending as they, you know, the money that they asked to move around and, you know, we're tracking closely to make sure that we're going to meet net school spend-in requirements. And if we have any additional transfer requests, we'll bring it to the June meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business. New business? Oh, new business, yeah? Any items on, not on the agenda brought? Discussion regarding the current cell phone policy for students recently enacted by the board. So.
I, I had brought that up. I spoke to the superintendent in regards to this. I've had some conversations with people outside the school and people inside the school and the superintendent is, has said that he would look into it and make sure that where we re-review the policy that we enacted briefly, I, I think it's like a micromanaging thing, but I just wanted to bring it up saying that we are, well, I am, and I've talked to all the board members, who have had people say things. I, I trusted the policy that you brought forward and you said you would look at and make sure that it was being enforced and upheld according to what you had brought to us that we voted for.
The self, cell phones and, and personal devices, as they're evolving and becoming more, you know, complicated and there's more programs, there's, you know, there's Twitter, there's Snapchat, there's, so every school is struggling with the explosion of the personal devices. So we appreciate the feedback and we've already, Jill and I have already had some conversations about how do we really focus on next year, strengthening what we have in place and making sure everybody knows that, that this is the, this is the policy that's approved in the student handbook and that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna enforce it. So, so I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, but every school district that I'm aware of is struggling. Everybody's got the devices and, you know, students are almost becoming addicted to it. Every time it vibrates, they want to see who's, who's texting, and there's so many different things, you know, social media. There's Facebook, there's Twitter, there's Snapchat, there's Instagram. So it's, it's a constant struggle, but, but we appreciate the feedback.
Motion to, no?
No, no motion.
Just, just on that, what is the, you know, I know what the policy is on the cell phones in the school, but in many cases, a student has to get a hold, turn that they get a hold of somebody at home or somebody at home has to get in, in touch with a student. What is the plan for that type of a situation, or situations similar to that in the, in the future, or that you're trying to implement?
Right, so, so the policy is very specific that they, they can use the phone before school, after school, and during lunch. So they can use it then freely. During the day, they can only use it with permission. So if they needed to call a parent or if they needed to contact home or, all, all they have to do is, is ask their teacher for permission or go down to the main office and ask the disciplinarian for permission. If a parent needs to get a hold of a student, all they need to do is, is contact the main office and the main office will get in touch with the student and have them call home.
Okay, so for an emergency calls, or routine calls to the family that is on schedule, there's no problem?
And there may be, there may be classes where the teachers want the kids to use their cell phones because they're using them for a formative assessment. So there's, there's, there's websites that they can, or there's apps that they can put into their phone, click on it and they can use it to ask a question. Everybody puts the answer in and the teacher's checking to see whether or not the kids are getting the concept to, instantaneously, so that they know whether to move on or whether they got to go back and go over it, right? So, so it's with the approval of, of the teacher. So there are some situations where, now, they're not approving it to go call their friends or to be text messaging, right? They're approving it to use it. Kids might want to use it to go on a website to do some research for, you know, so, so it's, it's really about responsible use of the technology because it's really part of all our lives today. But part of the responsible use is, if you're not supposed to be using it in the hallway or in the bathrooms, then you shouldn't be, right? So that's what we got to kind of really be paying attention to. But it's about responsible use, using it for appropriate things and using it with the permission of, of either the teacher or the administrator. Thank you.
Committee person motions. Motion by Mr. Espinola to discuss the possibilities of instituting a parking fee for students to be placed onto a revolving account for future exterior grounds maintenance and upgrades.
Mr. Vice Chair will be withdrawing that motion tonight because of the participation, lack of, of other board members who wish to be present to talk about that, so I'll be removing that to possibly place it on an agenda for another time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Espinola. Report of subcommittees. Approval of the April 14th, 2016 Glaret's Building Committee Report.
Move to approve.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Espinola?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Monthly approvals, change order, change order number 17 to Consigliere's contract, Mr. Espinola and Mr. Lemay.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Motion to adjourn. Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Yes. I mentioned this to you.